At this time, if we would, would you continue with the roll call, Mr. Fawcett?
Corcoran.
Here.
Fairchild.
Here.
Florima.
Here.
Hines.
Here.
Kearney.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Tattman.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett. If everybody would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is applied in the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes from the previous meeting have been distributed for review. Everybody's reviewed them, and they look okay. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes as they are? Mr. Florima, seconded by Mrs. Corcoran, roll call on that motion.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
And the minutes from the last meeting have been accepted. At this time, we have reports of our committees. We'd like to go first. That's Ms. Patrick.
The Utilities Committee has two items on tonight's agenda, Items Number One and Number Two. Number One is the Second Reading of an Ordinance establishing the water rates based on the recommendation of the Utility Rate Review Committee. There's no change in these rates. They stay the same as they were this past year. Ordinance Number Two is the Second Reading to establish sewer rates based on the recommendation of the Utility Rate Review Committee. It was recommended to increase the sewer rate 4 percent. That will be a 25 cent increase on your sewer portion of your bill if you use a minimum usage. And so that next month's bills can be processed in a timely fashion. The computer needs updated with the new rate for sewer. I would ask that we waive the three-read rule tonight and pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Next, anybody? Mr. Hines?
Thanks, President Arnold. City Service Committee has two items on tonight's agenda. We had a City Services Committee meeting. We could go Monday night on April 2nd. We'll continue with both those items. First one is Item Number Five, and it'll be in its first reading, and it correlates to Assignment 18012, and is about appropriations for ongoing improvements to the Ross County Law Enforcement Center for a total of $151,000, $124. I'd like to thank both Ross County Commissioner Doug Corcoran, as well as City Police Department Captain Tim Gay for making themselves available last week, and as we're asking questions and help us clear the air on some key issues concerning our space, usage, and decision-making process for those things. I'd also like to thank Law Director and her office as well for putting together an installment plan that will keep us current with the city auditor and help us stay physically responsible. I would like to also encourage our colleagues, my colleagues here, that we need to fill a position on the committee that has delineated an lease agreement between a city for information, communication, decision-making needs that arise at the facility. So I'd hope to reconvene, we don't reconvene that operation for that committee as soon as possible, so we need to come up with some names of people we would like to nominate to that committee, represent city council in those proceedings. And as soon as we have some names, we'll have a City Service Committee meeting to discuss that appointment. Item Number Four is also in its first reading, and it corresponds to Assignment 18020, and concerns the cleanup of the Rennick Avenue Waste Disposal Site, and the $50,000 appropriation is necessary to get the facility back open to our residents and begin the process of getting this site to compliance with the Ohio EPA standards. I'd like to convey another big thank you to City Service Director Jeff Carman for being here last week, and making us able to help us navigate the options that were in front of us. There was lots of citizens who attended that meeting and made their sentiments known. I'd like to thank them for being involved. Thanks again for Cherry Rutherford and her office for working quickly to get this on the agenda tonight. I want to thank all you council people for being here extra early last Monday evening and having a good meeting and getting things expedited quickly. In an effort to expedite the process, at the appropriate time, I'm going to make a motion to waive the three-read rule on Item Number Four, so we get that yard waste disposal site operational as soon as possible and to keep the phone from ringing off the hook for all of us. I also like to graciously request, as we discussed at our meeting last Monday, Mr. Carman agreed to, that we move quickly develop some proposals to present to council as soon as possible, so we consider legislation to ensure the situation we're in right now doesn't happen again in the future for our residents. As soon as we see the resumption, we'll convene a City Services Committee meeting to get the ball rolling in the right direction. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. Any other committee reports? Yes, Ms. Corcoran?
Yes, thank you, President Arnold. This evening, Item Number Eight, Grant Use of the City Park and Surrounding Streets for the preparation, operation, and cleanup of the 35th Annual Feast of the Flowering Moon and appropriate $500 for materials to modify the layout of the festival. We had a meeting with some people from the administration, the committee, Chamber of Commerce, and some downtown business owners, and to improve the flow of traffic for the visitors and the downtown businesses, there's some layouts that we would like to change, so this $500 will help. The feast has been very helpful in listening to the concerns of the downtown businesses, so we'd like to help improve that flow of traffic for the feast. I'd like to congratulate them on their 35th year, being a part of our community and probably one of our largest events, and I won't go into too many details because we have members of the Feast of the Flowering Moon Committee here this evening that are going to let us know what will be happening on this special anniversary. And at the appropriate time, I'd like to waive the three-read rule. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corcoran. And other committee reports? Ms. Neal?
Development Committee has two assignments, none which are on the agenda tonight. The first one is the ongoing Assignment 17029, which is mobile vendor food trucks. The committee met right before this council meeting, and we went over operations, and we will have a third meeting on April 16th where we'll go over permit processes, and I hope at that time to be able to wrap up this assignment. The other assignment I have is 18017, and that is the donation offer to donate Steel Woods by Priscilla Steele. And we had a meeting with the Development Committee, and at that time, we discussed possible uses for that tract of land, and there was nothing that was, nothing came to mind that would fall in the city's plans. It's not contiguous to any of our parks. We thought it would be a maintenance issue, and that perhaps we wouldn't be able to carry out Mrs. Steele's dream of a STEM lab or nature preserve as well as she would like. So I've spoken with Mrs. Steele and thanked her profusely for a really generous offer, and have promised to get her in touch with school officials so that maybe she can make that donation to the school. So at this time, I'd like to take 18017 out of committee. Thank you. That ends my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, anybody? Ms. Fairchild?
Thank you, President Arnold. The Human Resources Committee has two items on the agenda this evening. We have Items Six and Seven. Item Six is to appropriate $255,000, 255, $200, to cover wages for seasonal employees in the Parks and Recreation Service Engineering Administration and Utilities Department. At the appropriate time, I will ask to waive the three-read rule such that we can get those staff members hired. However, I would like to respectfully request that administration provide ordinance or information for ordinances such as these in a timely manner, so that we are able to read those three full times as we are allocating or appropriating that amount of money, which is an increase of over $80,000 from last year. I think our constituents should be able to read those, understand those, and have the ability to respond to those. Item Number Seven is to establish the pay scale for part-time summer and fall seasonal employees within the Parks and Rec, recreational swimming pool service engineering administration and utility departments for calendar year 2018. I will also ask at the appropriate time to waive the three-read rule for that ordinance. That's my report.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Fairchild. Yes, Mr. Tattman?
Thank you, President Arnold. Engineering Committee has one item on the agenda, Item Number Nine. It's also a Beatles song.
I realize that. If you ever hear me call the items out, I always say it's Items until it gets to Nine, then it's Number Nine.
Anyhow, Chillicothe Planning Commission did approve a permit to let Mobile Light install some utility poles that would increase the cell service out on Bridge Street. There will be two poles, two, by the way, Pat. There'll be one at Shaw or Pawnee, and the other will be at the Fox Farm, that street going into, it's Fox, whatever, street, I can't think of the name of it now. Anyhow, there will be two of them, and this will go three reads. Also, I'd like to report on an item that you handed me tonight. It's the Assignment 18033. Apparently, I got a call from the Law Director's office, and this was actually an item that was approved back in November of last year. Man, I thought I had the number written down. Guess I don't. But this has already been approved. Is that correct?
Yeah, I can't tell you the number of it, though, Dave. I remember looking at it, but it was last week or week before. But I can get it to you.
Was that the ordinance we approved for the emergency to hit the lights on over at the school? Over CHS from the A-Lakeup?
No. No, I don't think so. I remember it being tied to anything else, but I could be wrong. Like I said, it's, I've had enough time since when I looked at it, and today did not be able to tell you much more than the fact that I looked at it.
Mr. Carman, is this not true, that this was an item, sorry to take care of?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the conversation.
This $31,000 requested from, to receive from the interns coming for claims?
Crystal told me it just wasn't brought forward, so I had to reappropriate it.
Is that what it is?
So this is a reappropriation?
Yeah, it was appropriated at the end of the last, at the very, it was like in the council meeting, November, December, we looked at it.
So where do we stand on this item?
It needs to be re-appropriated.
So I need to go ahead and go forward with this?
Same exact process.
Yeah, it's just different wording to carry it forward.
So does this have to be rewritten or anything?
What?
I'm just questioning. I mean, because I was told-
Yeah, basically, the money got appropriated, and it didn't get spent. We're still going to pay the bill, I assume. And so just, it probably can be the exact same language as the last time it stood.
Okay, so we can go forward with this? Because I think the Law Director's office has all the information, so all they do is have to bring it forward to council to put on the agenda. Correct? Yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Tattman, thank you.
I'm so confused.
So are we.
Actually, if this is it, how much was the amount? The way I've got it written in the spreadsheet here is that we did have it accepted and approved, $31,339 from an insurance claim, and that was Ordinance 1517, or, I'm sorry, 11517, and that went through on December the 8th. So I think we have already accepted and approved it. Does it need reapproved, then?
Yeah, because it didn't get carried forward.
Okay.
It probably does not need to be accepted.
No.
Okay.
It's not accepted.
So the wording that, do we have to modify the wording in the legislation? There's-
You might want to change your legislation request language.
To just be appropriate and accept?
Then we can bring it forward?
Yes.
Thank you. Still so confused.
Just say yes.
Is that all?
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Tattman. Yes, Ms. Kearney?
I'll go next, because this is very clear.
That's right.
Okay, number three, ordinance number three, Second Reading, is support a community yard sale to be held on the weekend of June the 1st, 2018, through June the 3rd, 2018, and waiving the yard sale permit fee of $5 for that weekend. And it's a great opportunity for people to get rid of items that they do not want prior to, the mayor will talk about that. I'm out of my lane. Stay in my lane.
No, please do.
But we can get rid of a lot of our items during this particular time, and we will have a lot of people door-to-door that we can go to from one to another. So it sounds so a lot of fun, and some neighborhoods may even pass out lemonade. So please keep this-
Is that an invitation?
That's an invitation. Please keep this in mind, June the 3rd, 2018, and the yard sale permit fee is waived, so you don't even have to go down to the administration office and do anything. Just work on getting items out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kearney. Okay, that fills our agendas. Anyhow, if any other committee assignments that are working on, they'd like to make a report on this evening? I'll see you in a sec. We'll move on to the reports of our officials. Our mayor, Mr. Luke Feeny.
Thank you, President Arnold. I'll start by echoing Councilwoman Kearney's enthusiastic endorsement of the citywide yard sale ordinance. And, you know, at first, I thought, well, let's go ahead and quickly pass that ordinance, but I think it is a good idea to do the three reads, get to talk about it every week, and talk about lemonade, and try to go to the city. And then, of course, Law Director Pickup starts that following Monday. Now, going back in order, I would support Councilwoman Patrick's request to waive three read rule on Items One and Two. On Item Four, I just want to say, you know, I think there has been some frustration expressed, and rightfully so. I'll take responsibility for the sort of lack of planning here with that site, with the situation we're in now. I do want to draw your attention, though, to the efforts Safety Service Director Carman went through last year to coordinate a pretty big project at that site with two arms of the federal government, as well as the city. A lot of time and energy went into coordinating a project that would have the National Guard deliver everything at that site out to the VA. Some pretty unique circumstances led to that not happening, and we've quickly, at least internally, moved forward with what I think is a responsible plan to get it cleaned out, and I agree with the sentiment that we need a plan going forward. So, you know, I regret that we're in the situation we're in. I appreciate the work that he's done, and all the work that he did do to come up with a pretty creative solution, and we are where we are now. So I would support the passage of that ordinance tonight and commit to council that we will have a plan going forward. On that note, we should have an announcement at our next council meeting regarding the door-to-door pickup, the yard waste pickup program that will be coming in the summer. Then on to Item Six, I would also support the passage of that item tonight along with Item Seven. And on Item Eight, echo Councilwoman Corcoran's comments about the Feast of the Flowering Moon and the organizers. It's been a pleasure working with you this year. It's an exciting time with the 35th anniversary coming up, and $500 hopefully will help and show some appreciation on our behalf of you working with us, and I think this year we'll see a lot of work can be done in the future, too. So I've enjoyed working with that group, and I thank Councilwoman Corcoran for her efforts in facilitating that process. And then a bit of fun news. On March 29th, I traveled to Athens for the second stage, second part of the process for our joint application with Ohio University of Chillicothe for a grant from the Sugar Bush Foundation in Athens. As you recall, we applied for a grant for $30,000 through which Ohio University of Chillicothe will be the marketing and business arm of the recycling program. It would pay for two interns from their business program, marketing program, to help with that arm of the city's recycling program and events and that sort of thing. I traveled to Athens with Dean Tuck and our current unpaid intern, Jessica Rooney, who also works full-time, goes to school full-time, has a one-year-old daughter, and is interning with the city. She, in particular, gave, just did a really nice job on the presentation, and we got word last week that in this round, we were the highest-scoring applicant, and they are recommending that we be fully funded to the Ohio University Foundation. So particularly, we want to thank young Jessica for all of her efforts, but we're excited, you know, check's not in the mail yet, but we think we're headed in the right direction. I just wanted to pass on that little tidbit of good news. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Feeny. That's good news. Moving on to auditor, Ms. Tattman.
Well, to grant the yard sales again, you are not required to come in and pay for a permit fee. However, if you do come in and you give us your name and address, we'll add it to a listing that will get included on a map. You can either call us, or you can stop in, and then we'll have those maps located throughout the city and some of the water department soon pass out. So that way, when you are going around to your yard sales, you have a list of all the locations. They'll also be posted online, too. But then, the second piece of news is Tuesday, April the 17th, is income tax due date, and to help people out, we will have extended hours beginning April the 12th. That's Thursday, and Friday will stay open until 6:00 PM, and then Monday and Tuesday will also remain open until 6:00 PM. But something different we're going to try this year is we will be open on Saturday from 8:00 until 11:30 AM to help get people the opportunity to come in at all the time. And that concludes our report.
That's great. Thank you. And our law director, Ms. Ruth Burt?
Thank you, President Arnold. After she mentioned taxes, I'm too depressed to talk about it.
I know that feeling, absolutely. I don't have anything per se directly for myself this evening. The mayor has given me a list of names that we need to appoint, some of them to appoint, some of them will be moving forward on the DDC, which is the Downtown Development Commission. We have some at-large positions. Some of these people are there currently, and they need to be appointed. It will be a four-year appointment. Tom White, Dave Strickland, Megan Van Buesker, Tiffany Baldwin, and Bob Etten. Some of those people are on there now, but they, this will be for another four-year term. There are some other people that currently are on, and I'll just mention their names, that we're not reappointing, that they're staying on, from city council, Beth Neal, from the Ross County Commissioner, Steve Neal, no relation. No relation? No? No, that's my thought. The, also Randy Davis, the Davies, who is the president of the chamber, and also Martin Tuck, who is the dean of OUC. Some other new people who have changed that still are going to have an unexpired term is Brian Radcliffe. He is the chairman of the Design Review Board, and also Josh Barrington, who is an individual that is on there because of his historical experience, his historical preservation experience. So if anybody would so move, the people that I originally mentioned that we do need to appoint for the four years, do I have a motion to, for council to approve those people?
Make motion.
Mr. Paul, seconded by Mr. Hines. He's just a little bit quicker than you. Roll call on that motion.
You went through the names too fast. I'd like to-
I will write those down, but I would take a roll call. Yeah? Sure. It's the five-year stop. All right.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Fairchild?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Tattman?
Yes.
And that motion has passed, and I don't have anything to add at this time. Hopefully, spring's around the corner, maybe. Moving on to audience participation, we've got a couple people that have come in to speak this evening. The first person I have on the list this evening is Gene Dutz, and he is coming in to talk about the feast. So, Gene, help yourself.
Thank you. I promised to keep it short. I made notes here, so I won't take up too much time. But I thank you for the opportunity to share information about the upcoming 35th anniversary of the Feast of the Flowering Moon. I believe I know most of you, but if we haven't met, I'm Gene Dutz. I'm the 1819 president for the Feast of the Flowering Moon, and this year, we've been working a lot on some of our committees, trying to build up the Mountain Men encampment. We've done a lot of recruiting. That's kind of the settlers' area over by the lake that we have. We're also bringing in some additional Native American dancers, and hopefully, once she's crowned, we'll have Miss Indian World again this year at our festival. And one of the big things that we're doing is bringing back the community popular Anything That Floats But a Boat race. It's been discontinued for about six years. It's, every year, we get questioned when it's coming back, what date it is, and so for our big 35th anniversary, we're bringing it back, hopefully, to get some more, some of the past participants involved, and get some new participants as well. I would also like to acknowledge the work that Councilwoman Corcoran and Mayor Feeny has worked with us this year. It's been great working with you guys, and Jeff Carman, Fire Department, and President Arnold as well, to come up with some different layout changes, discussion, really good discussions on potential expansion for the future, infrastructure needs, and different things that we can look at going forward in the next five years for the 40th anniversary. So with that, I just wanted to thank you all again for letting me come in, have a chance to address council, and I want to thank everybody who's helped with planning for the 35th anniversary as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and good luck with the, I'm looking forward to the Anything That Floats But a Boat.
We are, too.
Also, this evening, I have Mr. Coats here. Would you like to get up and say some things, Mr. Coats?
I feel good.
Okay. We're giving you plenty of time.
I have to tell you that I'm doing this at some risk, because yesterday was my 88th birthday anniversary, and there's some question on whether I came out of that a year smarter or a year more senile. That needs to be clarified. Quick background note, the Tree Commission has six male members. Five of us are degree foresters. The one who is not is the most knowledgeable person I know on nature, plants, trees, and birds. We have a vacancy. We're looking for a woman, and she must be able to handle the shovel. A quick, uh, background note, the tree commission has six male members. Five of us are degree foresters. The one who is not is the most knowledgeable person I know on nature, plants, trees and birds. We have a vacancy. We're looking for a woman. And she must be able to handle the shovel and those are the only requirements. What I'm here for tonight is to talk a little bit about the city's tree canopy. When you are in Grandview Cemetery and you look out over the city, you can see quite a bit of tree canopy. When you drive it and when you walk it, you can see that there are many, many, many places where trees could be planted to the city's benefit. There are not many streets that are like Caldwell. There are not many places where you can find five stately trees in a row like on Payne Street by St. Mary's. What we would like to do as a commission is take on a project that we're calling ward planting. We were, we were thinking of, for each ward each year, you would plant five trees in the spring and five in the fall. If we do that over and over and over again, we'll increase some canopy for the city. And then on the other side of the coin, if you take down a couple of big old trees, you've negated a lot of, uh, tree canopy. We, we would do all the grunt work. We would scoop out the, scope out the side, the sites and we would, um, check the right-of-way. We would check overhead wires. We would check underground pipes. We would ask the homeowner, would you like to have a tree? If they say yes, we would plant one. If they say no, we would not plant them. People are, uh, everybody is a tree person. There's an urban forester up in Lake County who was talking to a homeowner and the homeowner, very appreciative of trees. He understood their value. But if trees had leaves and flowers and fruit, he did not want a tree. So the forester proposed a compromise and that was, he would get a twenty-foot wooden stake and drive it in the ground and then come back every twenty-five years and replace it. And the guy still did not take down. Anyway, the reason I'm here tonight, we would like you folks to consider some way that we could involve more of the populace. We don't mind doing all the work, but you've got a lot of constituents out there. They must have some idea of which of their streets they would like to have a tree, which of their properties they would like to have a tree. And I was wondering, what if we knew in each of the wards, how many people would be glad to have a tree? And suppose that number came out to be seventy-two every ward. Planting five trees every spring, five trees every fall wouldn't cut the mustard. So what would that mean? Means that we need to do more. We need a bigger budget maybe so we could plant more trees. All I'm asking is, we, we want to go ahead with this program and, and we will and we can, but we'd like some input if we could get it from you. We're partial toward these three streets here. We checked with our people and there was eight people on that block that looked like they had a tree. If we had something like that, our planting might be more effective than if we just went by and picked this site and that site and the other site. And that is my plea. If you have ideas, you can buzz them in into Clint Bob's at Parks and Recreation and then we can follow up on it. The earliest we could start this program would be in the fall. We're very well booked up for this spring already and have quite a bit on our plate. But, um, maybe we could get that going in the fall. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy birthday. Thank you, Mr. Coats, and happy birthday.
I thought you might forget.
I'm getting it that age. Appreciate it. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say this evening? Not seen it? Okay. We'll move forward with, uh, old business. Does anybody have any old business they'd like to bring up this evening? Okay, how about petitions and correspondence received by the clerk?
I have nothing new to report, Mr. President.
All right. New business, does anybody, anybody? Yes, Mrs. Patrick?
It's kind of old, kind of new, but, uh, tomorrow will be a nuisance abatement board meeting at two-thirty. And to follow on our community yard sale in the month of June, on June sixteenth, uh, the Pickway, Ross, Fayette, Highland, Solid Waste District, they're having a tire and electronics recycling event at the Ross County Fairgrounds. You can dump off five tires, passenger tires for free. Anything above that is three dollars a tire as long as they're passenger light truck. And then with electronics, there's a whole list of stuff they'll take. They'll take computers and, uh, TVs, stereos, all kinds of stuff. I'll have handouts at our next meeting with all that information on it. If you go to the nuisance abatement board meeting tomorrow, you'll get that copied back. But it's a good chance between the yard sale, large item pickup and this recycling, we should have a spotless city when we're done. That's the goal.
That's a good point. What was the date on that again?
I'm on my calendar, June seventeenth, spotless city.
June sixteenth.
Will you have a soft copy of that?
I don't, no, I can mail you one tonight.
Yeah, that'd be great. We could distribute it that way on our sites and such. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Anybody else have any new business they'd like to bring up? Committee assignments and meeting dates. Uh, anybody have any upcoming meetings that, uh, going to be in the next week or two other than nuisance, which was just announced? Uh, committee assignments, I think we probably really discussed the only one that we had this week quite a bit earlier, which was the, uh, money from the insurance claims for traffic accidents.
Let's talk about it again.
Do you want to go back over that? And, um, that's all I have in committee assignments and meeting dates. So we will move on to legislation. And whenever you're ready, Mr. Paulson. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Dan.
I have the April sixteenth, uh, development at six-thirty.
April sixteenth, development at six-thirty?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And I knew that. And that'll be here in chambers.
Yes.
All right. Now, we'll move on to legislation. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Paulson.
Item one, second reading of an ordinance to establish the water usage rates based on the recommendation of the utility rate review committee and declaring emergency, second reading.
Ms. Patrick.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three read rule, seconded by Mrs. Neal. Uh, roll call on that motion.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And that motion has passed. We'll call on the legislation.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Uh, item number two.
Second reading of an ordinance to establish sewer rates based on the recommendation of the utility rate review committee and declaring emergency. Second reading.
Ms. Patrick.
Again, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three read rule, seconded by Mrs. Carroll. Roll call on that motion.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And that motion has passed. We'll call on the legislation.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number three.
Second reading of an ordinance supporting a community yard sale to be held the weekend of June first, two thousand and eighteen through June third, two thousand and eighteen, and waiving the yard sale permit fee of five dollars for that weekend. Second reading.
That'll move on to next meeting. Uh, item number four.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating fifty thousand dollars for costs related to cleanup of the city's yard waste site on Rennick Avenue and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Heinz.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three read rule to do this cleanup.
I have a motion to waive the three read rule, seconded by Mr. Florina. Roll call on that motion.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patton.
The motion has passed. We'll call on the legislation.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Um, item number five.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating thirty thousand, two hundred, twenty-four dollars, eighty cents for the first of five annual installments totaling one hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars for the city's share of costs for upcoming improvements to the law enforcement center. First reading.
And that will move on. Item number six.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating two hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred dollars to cover wages for seasonal employees in the Parks and Recreation, Service, Engineering, Street Construction, Administration and Utilities Departments and declaring emergency. First reading.
Ms. Fairchild.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three read rule.
I have a motion to waive the, the three read rule, seconded by Ms. Neal. Uh, roll call on that motion.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Uh, that motion has passed. Roll call on the legislation.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number seven.
First reading of an ordinance establishing the pay scale for part-time summer and fall seasonal employees within the Parks and Recreation, Recreation Swim Pool, Service, Engineering, Administration and Utilities Departments of the City of Chillicothe for calendar year two thousand and eighteen and declaring emergency. First reading.
Ms. Fairchild.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three read rule, seconded by Mr. Heinz. Roll call on that motion.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Uh, that motion has passed. Roll call on the legislation.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Uh, item number eight.
First reading of an ordinance granting use of the city park and surrounding streets for the preparation, operation and cleanup of the thirty-fifth Annual Feast of the Flowering Moon, providing for coordination of its events with the City Parks and Recreation Department and appropriating five hundred dollars for materials to modify the layout of the event. First reading.
Uh, Ms. Corcoran.
Yes, President Arnold. I would ask that we waive the three read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three read rule, seconded by Mr. Pro, uh, Paul.
You almost said Patrick.
Almost did, yeah. Roll call on that motion.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Florina.